Oh, I know the zoning.
Good evening and welcome. Happy to have you all here with us on Cinco de Mayo. If you would, please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Wolf?
Let's bow for prayer. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we humbly come before you tonight thanking you for the promises given in your holy word. Teach us to learn your word and its truths every day. We're devastated by wars and rumors of wars in other lands. We feel a loss of trust even in our own nation. We pray for all in authority as you have established them. We pray for those suffering, especially innocent children. We ask you to fill each of us with your loving kindness that we can share your goodness with our neighbors. We ask your guidance on us, this council, to make decisions that will be beneficial both now and in the future. We pray in the name of the risen Christ. Amen.
So call to order, on May 5th, 2022, council meeting. At this point, we'll consider approval of tonight's agenda. Anyone have any changes, additions?
Mr. Mayor, we had received a request from the applicant for case number, conditional use permit 2202-003 Misty Court Misty Way, to have that public hearing postponed until June 2nd to allow them more time to prepare for the public hearing. If that's the desire of council, you'll need to vote to postpone that case until June.
Okay. Should we do that as, before we approve the agenda?
I move to postpone the Misty Way case to the June 2nd council meeting.
Another motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. Any additional changes?
Yes, sir. We need to request to add an executive session for real estate and personnel. I need to request to add to Old Business, a discussion and possible action on additional easements and right-of-way for Technology Parkway. That would be item 11C. And a second request, add to Old Business, a discussion and possible action to provide for the exemption from the residential sanitation franchise for neighborhoods with private streets. And that would be Old Business, item 11D.
Okay. Any further revisions?
I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Another motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. Tonight, we have one guest visitor on the agenda. Cherokee Office Economic Development presentation on Corporate Office Park at the Bluffs, Mr. Heath Tippins. Welcome, Mr. Tippins. Always a pleasure to have you here.
Thank you. It's always a pleasure to see each of you. So, good evening, Mayor and Council. I believe I know most of y'all, if not all, but I'm Heath Tippins, Vice President with the Cherokee Office of Economic Development. So first and foremost, I just wanted to thank each of y'all for everything that you do for the city, as well as the community at large. We really appreciate it. I won't take up much time on the agenda tonight. I'll be brief in my comments. But I just wanted to briefly go over a potential opportunity in the Bluffs. And so, we appreciate the city purchasing the remaining property within the Bluffs. And we appreciate that way it kind of guides your overall vision as you're looking forward. And we hope tonight what we show you kind of fits in with that vision. So we've had many corporate prospects over the years within the Bluffs. And also, there's already international presence of business off Bluffs Court, which you can see there, the existing buildings. In fact, there's another item on the agenda later tonight from an international prospect that we feel could work well with what we're hoping to propose to the city. So from the beginning, the Bluffs was a 700-acre, as y'all are aware, mixed-use master plan development that targeted corporate and technology companies in nature. And as echoed by our letter of intent that we previously submitted or recently submitted, it would be our request that the city entertain a sale to the development authority of Cherokee County for the property outlined on the screen in red, which is approximately around 42 plus or minus acres. Further detail is obviously presented in the LOI that was sent. Our friends at Georgia Power helped us with some renderings to show conceptually how the acreage could potentially build out. As you can see, the view is looking north towards Fayettecon Road. You can see Lake Canton up in the top-left corner. That was for you, Mr. Mayor. I know not Hickory Log Reservoir, but Lake Canton. The buildings with the red roof line are current existing light industrial product, as you saw on the previous slide. We also took the liberty of incorporating the B&amp;B Group site plan, which is, I believe, is the first public hearing tonight, to show how the proposed development complements each other. You can also see the new roundabout and new Parkway running east-west along the northern boundary of the rendering. Here is a southern view. Again, we've noted the existing buildings in red and included the proposed B&amp;B project. For the 42 acres, we've also included the square footage for each building, based off our engineer's opinion of what best fits on each tract. As you can see, the buildings shown on the rendering are smaller in nature. And so, that would not attract large distribution projects generating a lot of trucks. We feel that the prospects would be more corporate in nature with minimal truck traffic. In total, this could result in an additional 330,000 square feet of new product to market to corporate prospects. And so, as the sun's rising, on this potential opportunity, we've included another view looking eastward. As you can see, this gives a lower aerial look at the new roundabout and Parkway, as well as how the B&amp;B development and what we are proposing could potentially flow. In closing, this view shows the boundaries of what we hope the city would consider selling to the authority overlaid on the overall rendering. We appreciate your time and consideration of this request and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Tippins. Any questions for Mr. Tippins this time?
Thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you. We have two public hearings on the agenda tonight before we get into our business meeting. So at this time, I'm going to have our city manager review the guidelines and procedures for public hearings before we open the first public hearing.
Yes, sir. First of all, thank you all for attending our public hearings tonight. We have two public hearings on two different cases. These hearings are recorded verbatim and become part of the legal record of the cases being discussed. As such, you are required to sign up and fill out an affidavit to speak during the public hearing process. The public hearing was advertised in the legal organ, noticed to neighboring property owners under the development code via mail, and noticed on the property via those large yellow public notice signs. The hearing will begin with a declaration of the mayor to open the public hearing, including the case number and a description of the case and a summary by our staff of any actions or information about the particular case. Those that wish to speak in favor of the applicant, including the applicant themselves, will be given the first opportunity to speak. They will have a total of 10 minutes to speak on behalf of their position. Those in opposition will then be given a total of 10 minutes to speak on behalf of their position. Those in support may reserve time to rebut or comment to any opposition statement. Once all parties have spoken or the total time for each side has expired, the mayor will call close the public hearing. At that time, the city council will be free to discuss the case and question staff about the case. In the interest of all parties and to give fairness to both sides, a timekeeper, that'll be me, will be assigned to track the 10 minutes for each side. As there may be several speakers, we ask that you keep your comments concise and try not to duplicate the comments of the other speakers. Please give your name and address for the record before you start speaking. Please address your comments to the council. We ask the audience to maintain decorum. And the hearing process is a monologue, so what you discuss towards the council will not be replied to during the public hearing process from the council. It's your opportunity to provide statements. And that is the rules for our public hearing process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peppers. So with that being said, we will open, we'll begin with a public hearing on item A. Public hearing, discussion of ZCA 2202-004, Request to amend zoning conditions that pertain to the development commonly known as Park Village. Mr. Green?
I thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As you stated, this is case ZCA 2202-004 for Park Village. Park Village was originally approved in November of 2003 as a mixed-use development consisting of roughly 146 acres. The approved uses include a single-family detached homes, townhomes, commercial space, and a projected or proposed commuter rail station. Roughly 23 acres have been developed with a single-family detached subdivision. In the original approval, there was a maximum of 700 residential units approved and a maximum of 152,000 square feet of commercial space. At that time, one of the conditions that was placed on the property was if anything was to change out there, it had to come back before mayor and council, which is what the applicant has done. The applicant is requesting 35 townhomes. In the original submittal, he also showed 15 condominium units, those that since been deleted from the plan. He is asking for 276,000 square feet of light industrial space, 57,600 square feet of combined light industrial, office, retail, and general commercial space, 116,000 square feet of office, general commercial and retail, and one portion of 2,500 square feet of commercial retail, for a total of 452,100 square feet. In the original site plan that was submitted, they were asking for a 25-foot perimeter setback, as this will all remain a single piece of, or a single lot of record. Since meeting with the community at their community input meeting, they have now incorporated, or their engineers are in the process of incorporating, an additional 25-foot buffer, which will be planted, so to give a total of 50 feet from the property line to the nearest building. Also affecting the properties, the Heard Road extension. In speaking with the county earlier, this is supposed to begin late summer of this year. Also, the site plan shows a possible parking deck. At the community input meeting, that was discussed amongst the applicant and the residents, and they have pledged to have some type of screening or buffering, so that will not adversely affect the residents of Park Village enjoying their pool area. The public input meeting was held on April 26th. I'll forward to you folks the summary of the meeting that was provided by Mr. Huff, and it addressed some of the concerns that the community had that showed up there. And I know that they've been working to help alleviate some of the community's fears.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Green. This time, we will open the public hearing. And we will ask the applicant to speak, followed by anyone else who wants to speak in favor of the project.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Parks Huff, the law firm of Sam's Larkin Huff, and I represent the applicant. And I've got a clicker here. I thought he handed it to me earlier. I've been frantically looking for it. I lost it. And he showed me where it was, and he's like, "I'm going to have it up there," so that's it. I've got a quick PowerPoint presentation to go through. The company that is involved in this development in this campus is Becker. They are an international company based out of Germany. They build robotic equipment that is used in manufacturing and distribution, often in the aeronautics and automobile industry. So this is their product. They build these arms that are built in a factory that is, I hate to use the word "factory" because it's not really what you think of a factory. It's a highly skilled process of building this with skilled employees and highly educated employees. They have a presence throughout the world, as you can see by that graphic. The property we're talking about, again, it's great that I follow the presentation from the Economic Development Department, showing you the location, because this was included in their presentation to show how it ties into Bluffs Parkway and the proposed new roadway. So this is the site plan that we have, and so this shows the proposed new roadway that would connect from Bluffs Parkway, and that cul-de-sac on the left-hand side is not in existence now. So if you think about it, when you're going up Bluffs Parkway, you get to the roundabout where Chattahoochee Tech is. This would be another step north from that. Then there's going to be a roundabout there. So this is a new roundabout that would then connect over to Fayettecon and make that connection eventually connect up to the airport industrial area. This is some of the visioning boards that they have provided based upon a similar development that they have in Germany. And what they build is an open-air facility with bright lights. They have a lot, they use, you know, smaller vehicles in a lot of their transportation, as you can see here. They also have solar power, solar panels on the roof, so that they provide as much electricity for their operations as they can. And this gives you just to get an idea of how they want to develop this. They also, as their project in Germany has done, they want to have people living close by. This is the kind of campus that they want to envision, so that their employees can live close by and have a very short commute to work. And they also want to eventually be able to add a retail and commercial component to it that's shown here, that they would be able to provide that for not only their employees, but also surrounding residents. Again, just giving you some of the visioning boards. At Build Out, they anticipate 300-plus jobs. Again, these are highly skilled and highly sought-after jobs, a significant investment in the area. And again, going to that property overview. This is the road that's going to start summer next year, that's going to make this connection work and really changes how this property ties into Bluffs Parkway and the industrials and technological things that you've anticipated there in the future. This is your land use plan, just showing how you have a technology ridge and technology bluffs connecting, and this fits within that connection. This is the original master plan, and it had 700 units, residential units, and I think there's 140 or something in existence. So what we're doing, and it had 150,000 square feet of commercial industrial office anticipated on it. Obviously, that did not happen. This was zoned almost 20 years ago. So, and the road structure is very different. And you also know, Bluffs at Technology Park had some residential units and 3 million square feet of office and other technological uses and office uses there. And so that was also part of it. One of the things that we've done is we met with the community. They're very concerned. And obviously, we're right up next to Village Park, or Park Village, and they are the most concerned, as they should be. And we need to be respectful of them. They expressed concern about how our site plan was laid out. And so we have agreed to, we had a 25-foot building setback. We have now a 50-foot building setback. 25 for that would be a heavily planted buffer, which would include fencing in appropriate locations. And that would be reviewed, planned review, to make sure that it creates an opaque barrier with them. If I can, I'm going to see if I can play this. If it will play, it may not play. But there's a great video, and I'm just going to play a second of it to give you an idea. This is their campus in Germany that this is emulated after. Big question, that's a historic stack. They are green energy. That's just, it stayed there because it's historic. Make sure that's clear. So there, that's what you have. So I think that gives you a perspective on the type of work environment that you have in this. And they anticipate the buildings that they're not occupying would be similar suppliers to them and to their industries. So again, very similar businesses that will be providing high-tech-type equipment and material within their industry and employing similar type folks. So this is their actual operation that they have in Germany, and this is what they plan to create here and the type of work environment that they have here and there. Great example of exactly what they build. And man, you know, and again, it takes very high-skilled level of people to do that. We had a great community meeting with the community, and the things that we've agreed to, that you received in my letter, included dark sky compliance, that we would have environmentally sensitive lighting. We've added the green buffer plannings that we would have in place there. And being sensitive to their questions and concerns, we'll be glad to respond to anything else they have. But one thing that you'd know from the previous presentation is that when this road comes in, this connects it to Bluffs Parkway, it becomes more of a opportunity for this type of technologically advanced business and international business coming in here. It's, you know, it's really, you know, a great opportunity to be able to kind of continue with the Bluffs, what was anticipated there, but didn't happen partly because of topo and things like that. This is a much better location for that. And so with this road being built, this creates this opportunity. So we ask that you carefully consider this. We are here to answer any questions you have, and I'll reserve whatever time I have to respond to some questions and concerns from the community.
Thank you, Ms. Tuff. Six citizens signed up to speak. I just want to confirm, are any of you signed up to speak in favor of the project? Sorry, sir. There's no public comment unless you signed up to speak, so. So we'll move on to the speaking in opposition, the 10 minutes in opposition to the project.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Huff will have 2 minutes and 9 seconds to rebut.
To rebut, okay. Okay, beginning with our first speaker, Bobby Nama. And I believe you have a corresponding handout. Two? Yes, two.
Thank you very much. My name is Bobby Nama. I live at 112 Park Village Drive. Thank you for the opportunity to come speak with you in regards to this matter. It's my first opportunity to deal with the city of Canton. And I will tell you right now, the people that I talked with at this building were very, very cooperative, very concerned about what the residents were going through, our questions, and they helped out tremendously. With that being said, thank you. Part of what we're looking at is, when you're doing the rezoning, part of what you're asking is, how does it affect the neighboring community, neighboring residents? Let me just start off with the parking garage and building number eight that overlook our amenities at Park Village. They're basically, the topo is going to be there way up on the hill, looking down into the pool, looking down into our common areas. And so the 25-foot buffer that they're proposing, you'll be able to stand on the back parking deck and say, "Uh-uh, uh-uh," and see everything. With that being said, we would like to see a 50-foot buffer with cryptomeria planted there. And it's like a Leyland cypress that grows very tall, but it doesn't have diseases easily. And that would allow us some screening protection from that. And as well as going on around the residential side, this backs right up to my back door, to be honest with you. And with that being said, I'll be sitting in my living room, and I can watch whoever's walking down the trail, because they're just 25 feet away. Can you please put us a 50-foot buffer in there, which is what they did for the townhomes across the street? And so with that being said, we'd just like a 50-foot buffer in there to where it gives us a little more screening from what's coming. Stormwater, the stormwater management, right now on the site plan, it is showing one feature pond. We have 24 acres, and we've got four detention ponds. They've got 36 acres, and they've got one feature pond. Where's all the water going? Where's it going to? Is it going into our property? And I was told that they could not put water into our property coming off of theirs, because you're going from total woods, vegetation, trees, to total concrete asphalt buildings. That water runoff is going to be tremendous. Where's it going? There hasn't been a hydrology study, according to what we've been told, done on the property yet. So how do they, how do we even know where it's going? How do we approve this or back it 100% without knowing that we're not going to get flooded out? There's a creek on the property, and they show it very clearly when it comes off of their property. But before their property, they show no creek. How does the creek just appear? And these are questions that we're asking. Topo, we don't know at what elevation the two-story parking garage will even start at, much less finish at. And so those are questions that we have, that we would like to get answered before the project is allowed to go further. Now, again, this is just requests that we're making. I know that this is a joint project from the state, the county, and the city. We are very concerned about traffic. Right now, we have a stop sign to get in and out at both of our entrances. We will not have the right-of-way to get out. Ongoing traffic, both directions, will be going first. With the traffic study that was presented to us, peak hours, morning, good luck. You're going to try and get out every nine seconds, a car is going to be going by. You know, when you're coming home to Eden, same thing. There is no way for us to get in and out of our subdivision without jeopardy. Our concern was about 18-wheelers. Well, right now, there's an 18-wheeler parked right outside our back door, and we've asked the police if we can move. Nope, he's totally legal parking there. So while I'm standing there yesterday at 3 o'clock, three 18-wheelers come up Fayettecon and go down towards 5. Tractor trailers coming up that hill up Fayettecon are just a nightmare, because when you get behind one, you're stuck, because they can't go up that hill. It's 40 mile-hour speed limit trying to put a truck up that hill. I don't know how much pull you've got with the city, I mean with county, but is there any way we can put no-through trucks on that road? We're worried about people cutting through our subdivision, once everything's developed, trying to figure out a quicker way to get to work, to get home. Can you put up no-through traffic in our subdivision? And at that point, I will stop, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Please refrain from reacting, please. Mr. Chris Kennard?
My name is Chris Kennard, and I live at 114 Park Village Drive. I don't, I want to characterize what I want to say as more of concern than being in opposition. And it kind of ties into what Bobby presented. We didn't plan this, but it just turned out that way. It's fortuitous. I'm a chemist by background. My concern is about the environmental, potential environmental impact that this manufacturing may present. In particular, I haven't heard anything yet about the type of solid, liquid, or gaseous waste streams that could be associated with the manufacturing. And I'm concerned about that, not only because of potential hazards, but also the nearby reservoir. reservoir. We have to be concerned about our drinking water and so forth. And having worked in the chemical industry and a very hazardous part of it, I know how important it is to plan for these things upfront, rather than after you discover something wrong. So, I would just ask that you consider that when you're making your decision on whether or not to approve the proposal as has been presented, because so far, I have not heard anything that deals with these topics, that are very important to me and hopefully to everybody else as well. Thank you.
Thank you. James Barber.
James Barber, I live at 333 Stony Hollow Road, uh, that's in the Park Village subdivision. Um, and I've gone back and forth on this issue, but my major concern, which, uh, it's even become a further concern after hearing this gentleman speak tonight, um, is what are our assurances that what they have proposed to us just last week is actually gonna come to fruition? Right now, they have restaurants, or a restaurant or two, uh, commercial space with retail, they had some condominiums that were supposed to be in there, and all these were from last week, and, and when we asked the questions, what percentage of this is gonna actually come true, what's, what percentage is gonna be retail, restaurants and amenities and such, and we couldn't get an answer. So, what assurance are we gonna have as a community that if this amendment is granted, that it's not going to just completely be full of factories and warehouses? As of tonight, just from this past week, gentleman here says that the condominiums have been nixed, so what other changes are gonna happen? So, I would like for you all to think about that. I don't wanna live with nothing but factories and warehouses behind my house. I don't. So, that's a huge concern, so please, take that into consideration. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Tim. Tim Breaker. Sorry if I mispronounced your names.
That's right. My name is Tim Bresko. I live at 116 Park Village Drive. Uh, I moved to the lovely city of Canton from Woodstock, and the primary reason that I moved here was because of what a lovely place it was to live. My wife and I moved into this neighborhood, we lived right along with thirteen other families facing this, the woods, we listened to the birds, we, I walked my dogs in there, and was very well aware that, uh, it was not an industrial, it was not zoned for industry. The last thing I wanted, and I'm now entering into my sixty-third, in sixty-fourth year coming in, and I wanna retire, and the last thing I wanna do is look out my backyard and take a look at an industrial complex. That's gonna affect the quality of my life for quite a long time. I don't feel like moving anymore. I thought that this was gonna be the place where I was gonna stay. Now, we're looking forward, and it's also been pointed out to other people that, you know, they're saying they're gonna build a buffer, there's gonna be, it's a beautiful industrial complex. I don't really care. I, I'm not interested in an industrial complex, I'm interested in the trees and, and the reasons that I moved here to the city of Canton. So, therefore, I'm, I'm really not terribly in favor of this. It doesn't make a difference what you do as far as putting up a fence. Fences don't make for good neighbors, anyway. Uh, and then, last but not least, what happens to our property values? My property values, you know, they've been going up. I was like, all excited, and now, all of a sudden, I'm being told that there's gonna be an industrial complex in back of my house. And that, that means instantaneously, my, my rates are gonna drop, and I have to disclose that to whoever's gonna buy it. Um, so, that, that hurts me too, and I'm not in a position anymore where I could afford to take these, you know, losses. So, that's my point.
Thank you. Time check. We have, we have ten seconds left. Okay. We have two speakers left.
Motion to increase time by ten minutes for both sides.
Motion, we have two speakers left.
Second.
Motion, okay. Motion to increase time by ten minutes for both sides. And a second. All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Pose, nay? Members voted for the motion. Steve Kaiser.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for allowing me to come tonight, and, uh, thank you for not throwing me out for my, uh, out of order there. Counsel, appreciate, uh, being here.
Mr. Kaiser, give us your address, please.
I don't want to. I will. Six forty-eight Sunflower Drive, Canton, Georgia. The only other time that I spoke to a counsel, I did the same thing, forgot where I live. Okay, I apologize, I apologize. To begin, my wife and I moved to Canton, Georgia in the fall of nineteen, or twenty-eighteen. She kind of put the wheels in motion, and it happened. So, here we are. I unfortunately, um, had my leg amputated the May prior to the time that we moved here. So, uh, we moved, and we love it. We love Canton. I told my friends that, um, I've moved to Cantanga, and they don't recognize it, and I said, yeah, Cantanga, Canton, Georgia. Cantanga sounds more exotic, see? I see that's on your website too, though, Cantanga, yeah. So, um, we have lived here, and one of the first things that we did was to drive around, notice all the beautiful scenery, the hardwood forests, and the, um, the evergreen forests that are typical of this area as well. One of my friends is a paleobotanist, uh, he just retired from, uh, the university up here in Moleska, Reinhardt. Good guy, he informed me of the very nature of, the actual nature of northern Georgia with the various ecosystems and eco-regions. We were biology students together in college. At any rate, I, I did some more reading about it, um, I walked through the woods, I like it, and my wife and I drive occasionally to do shopping, and one of the things that I immediately noticed was the clearcutting of areas. It became, became absolutely barren. And then, of course, um, the houses came. The bluffs was, uh, particularly frustrating to me, because I drove up the hill and I saw the heavy equipment there, and I thought, oh, hell, what are they doing here? Then I read the sign, it says seven hundred acres of mixed-use development, and I, I thought, well, surely, they're not gonna clearcut all of that. Well, a few weeks later, there wasn't a tree to be seen, just dirt. Now, ecologically, that's not good. It reflects sunlight right back into the atmosphere, heats the atmosphere, and we've got a problem with global warming right now. So, Canton essentially helped out with that. My issue with our friends that are proposing to build a, an industrial park behind us, thirty-six point nine acres, I've walked that, I've seen birds there, deer, other animals, salamanders. Georgia, and I'm a science type, Georgia is a, an ecological hotspot in the world. We have a tremendous biodiversity, and that biodiversity is right up there on that hill. Now, take the thirty-six point nine acres there, and now, I just saw a presentation where there is a proposed, um, clearing that is going to occur for forty more acres or something like that, um, to put in some large buildings. You add the, oh, okay, let's say thirty-six and forty acres, you get seventy-six acres. Bobby addressed the stormwater runoff. Whenever you put a building with tarmac and then a big building on it, a roof, that's an impervious layer. Water doesn't go through it. There's no place for water to go but off it somewhere. So, effectively, if those two places are relatively close together, we're gonna have seventy-six acres that are shedding water, and it has to go somewhere. I don't know where they're gonna build a pond big enough for that. On top of it, my friend, Mr. Kennard, um, mentioned, is concerned about the chemicals, et cetera, getting into the water. Well, if we build impervious layers in Canton, wherever we build them, we are going to get runoff from that, from those properties, and it will carry pollutants that are picked up on the highway, uh, chemicals, plastics, uh, the list goes on and on, and I'm not gonna delineate that. But those will go into the water somewhere. We've got an issue right now with, I believe, the number of homes that are being built and proposed in the Canton area. I don't believe that we have, and I, I don't know, because I can't find the answer. Maybe you can. But I, I don't believe that we have enough water, of a water treatment system, to handle the sewage that we produce right now. And all I see are just more and more and more and more homes that are going up. Now, we have industrial places as well, and where's that runoff gonna go? It'll eventually make its way into the Ottawa system or groundwater. Mother Nature had a plan. Trees that, and other plants, their roots hold the soil in place. The soil allows for permeation of water. It cleans the water, it holds it, it passes it on to aquifers so we can use it and wells. Now, you take away those trees, they can't suck up the water and reuse it to, uh, sequester carbon dioxide, that's another issue. So, when we clearcut areas, we are creating a cascade of problems that we won't have to deal with, but our descendants will. Oh, okay, then, okay, I'm sorry.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Richard Jordan.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Counsel. Richard Jordan, I live at 107 Park Village Drive. I just wanted to speak to, address a couple of the issues that we're seeing in the neighborhood, a couple of these have been touched on. The current concepts that we're seeing, to me, may not be the, the worst neighbor that we could have there in that location. However, there's a lot of unknowns, there's a lot of unknowns throughout the, the neighborhood, talking buffers, twenty-five feet, that's, that's pretty close to residential. The biggest issues that we're seeing, you know, obviously is traffic. Uh, we have a lot of concern about bait and switch on the, um, the initial, you know, approval. We get this changed over to industrial, they're telling us they're gonna build two initial buildings, later on, they're gonna add two more, two more, some residential, some commercial, but later on, that's, there's no guarantee once this, uh, approval is, is put in place, and there's nothing to, to guarantee that later on, before all this is finished, that we're gonna end up having a, uh, commercial, full industrial place right behind us. Kind of disturbed that there's not a hydrology study been done, there's not a runoff planned, we've not seen any topo studies, uh, topographical maps of what the layouts are gonna be. We do know that there's thirty-six, almost thirty-seven acres of land, they did admit that they were gonna pretty much clearcut, cut it to put it all in there. Where's all the water gonna go? And then, one other issue that we've seen, and there's a proposed feature pond, I don't know what that is, how big is that gonna be, what is the, the product of runoff that's gonna end up in that? And then, what happens if it fails? What is their, uh, potential plan for, um, making sure that that's compliant with Georgia safe dams? What is the amount of water that's gonna be held in there? And are they gonna have insurance and liability coverage that would protect us? Uh, honestly, don't feel that they've, they've provided enough information to your city employees, uh, to you, the council, or us, the homeowners, as far as the site.
Sorry, sir. Just, I wanna extend a couple minutes.
I'm, I'm almost done.
No, the time's up, sorry.
Okay, well, thank you.
Uh, Mayor, can we, I'd like to make a motion that we extend for another two minutes, please.
Second.
Motion to extend for another two minutes, second. All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Pose, nay? All members voted to extend by two minutes.
Basically, I just feel, I don't feel that we've been provided enough accurate information about what the ultimate goal for the layout, uh, where we're gonna manage runoff, manage stormwater. In your application, they did not provide a hydrology study, which was recommended, and put onto the application. And we, as neighbors, you know, obviously, sitting at our pool, don't wanna be looking at the back of a forty-foot, uh, parking deck, which is in the proposal. And though things have changed, as evident tonight, even with the, the change of the condos being pulled out, what's gonna be pulled out and what's gonna be replaced? And by, by understanding of your approval tonight, that that would change that zoning. If they can put industrial on the far west side, the far east side, north and south could all be in industrial, everything else can be pulled back, and that's just a major concern of us. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. That's all of our speakers that signed up. So, now, Mr. Huff will have fourteen minutes.
Fourteen minutes and nine seconds.
Say you extended the last one to pretend, do I have to take all that ten? I'm glad you did. Just wanted to, um, uh, go through, just to, oh, wrong one. There we go. Couple things to address. Uh, the, the first is the hydrological study, uh, those are done at Plan Review, there's a, there's a couple good reasons for that. One is, there's a whole lot of due diligence that goes into soil conditions, and the rules change, they have changed pretty much every two years, come January one. So, you know, if you do a hydro study now, it may not be, depending on when they're pulling permits, may not, the rules could change come January one next year. Um, the last change that occurred for hydrology required, requires infiltration. Uh, so, this, uh, stormwater management will definitely include infiltration, which means we will have to be finding ways to replicate the existing condition in terms of, uh, flow off of our property and infiltrating some stormwater into the ground. Um, I certainly appreciate the comments and concerns about water quality, and certainly, I would expect that when we go through Plan Review, we would have an enhanced review for water quality, and we would have to provide some data on enhanced water quality. Um, I'm, I'm sure that's, uh, gonna be something that we would be doing and we'd be glad to do. The, in, cou- couple things I wanted to just touch on is, is that the herd road extension's happening, uh, it, it's being funded by the state and, and by the county, um, and it is designed to hopefully alleviate some of the existing traffic problems. And it is designed to hopefully alleviate some of the existing traffic problems with some of the trucks that are on roads they shouldn't be on. Anything we can do to help with that? And obviously, the, the back entrance of Park Village is, uh, is, to say it lightly, it's, it's a non-conforming type configuration. So all that will be corrected with this new road connection. I, I do wanna bring out, too, the point that, if I can get to the right one, that the property is a hundred and two acres total. And we're talking about acquiring thirty-six acres of it. And so some of that remaining land, which is roughly seventy acres, will be, remain green space. And I certainly do appreciate the concerns about the environment. And, and that can be handled with some of the additional properties that, that are part of this property that we're acquiring. The other thing I'd like to point out, this is the master plan that was done before, showing that it was approved for seven hundred residential units at, almost five units per acre. And really, some of the property we're talking about is in that letter A area, which is a mixed use. So it was anticipating, this wasn't going to be low-density, you know, low-impact type development. It was always anticipated to be rather high-intense residential and commercial and office and such. So this was, you know, it's trees now, and I certainly understand, you know, when they look and see trees, it was never anticipated that it would be trees. And even if it developed under this residential proposal, you'd have the clear cutting and, and significant development that, that would go along with that. So we, in terms of the questions about the affirming that we would comply with what we are asking for, we would expect your approval to be to our master plan that we submitted, which if you look at the site plan, it has, the two right buildings are not industrial buildings. They're listed as general, commercial, and office-type uses and retail. And so those would in fact be, if I can get to it here. There we go. So you can see the two buildings on the right-hand side are designated on our site analysis as in fact, those are not listed as industrial building. They're commercial, retail, and office. That was done intentionally. And so we would be consistent with this site plan that, that would be part of the master plan that we'd ask, be asking for you to approve. There was a showing some condos as, as potential second-floor units. That would have to come back anyway as a conditional use permit with the details of the look and things like that. So that, that is the reason why that's not really being discussed today. And then we have the thirty-five townhomes. I didn't go through this on the, on the site plan before, but just so you can see that as that road comes through, we've got the townhomes listed on, shown on the, on the top side there. Again, their experience for their campus that they have in Germany is they want people to be able to live in, in close by to where they're working. And they wanna have that in part of the campus. And so that was what we have here. I certainly understand their concerns. And one of the things I'm gonna do after here is we're gonna be talking about the buffer and, and more assurances we've done. We've, we've done a twenty-five-foot buffer with heavily landscaping, whatever planting material that they would like and whatever planting material your arborist recommends, we'll be glad to do. Cryptomaria is certainly an accepted species. I'd leave it up to the professionals to determine that and what, and, and what they would like. Because they, they're gonna want, they're the ones impacted by it. So we will be looking at that and seeing how we can improve the buffer and, and commitments there. But we, I do wanna say, we had a community meeting a couple of weeks ago, and I appreciated everybody coming out. And you do not always appreciate how you've got good dialogue with people and bringing up real issues to talk about. And I appreciated them, and, and it reflected tonight that they have very valid concerns to discuss. And, and we're here to, to address those in any way that we can. But I think this is a overall, a part of the vision of the city to be able to have some growth in the business and employment. And this is an appropriate location for it. It's lined up with the new road that's coming in. It's lined up with other opportunities that the Development Authority is working on. So that being able to have this caliber of campus come in with an experienced business like Becker, I think is a wonderful opportunity. And I, again, I'm, I'm here to answering questions you have. My client has their operations folks and the management folks here that can answer any detailed questions you have. And we'll be glad to, to answer those questions anyway. So I don't know that I, I'm sure I've got time left.
You do have seven minutes left.
Seven, seven minutes left, let me check.
Doesn't mean you have to use.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know. Yeah, I think, I think, I, I mean, and, and again, if, if there's something that I missed on, on their questions and concerns, please, please let me know. I'm glad to do it. But I mean, I think stormwater, we will definitely be doing hydrology. I mean, the, the, the hydrology part, as you can see, there's a pond there. And it runs through the draw that comes basically by their amenity package. But we know that that cannot, will not be handling all, all our stormwater. It's designed to have underground stormwater on the southern end of the property. It's just not reflected on here. But there's a significant amount of our stormwater will, will be handled underground, which is very expensive, but it also allows us to have some opportunities for water, water quality features. When you do it underground, they're sometimes easier to do with additional water quality features. So we understand that. We will be doing a full hydrology study. They'll be analyzing their downstream detention areas and the pipes and ensuring that we do not in any way negatively impact them. And if there are some current deficiencies, we will be responsible for correcting this. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Huff. At this point, we will close the public hearing and open it up to council for discussion. Any questions for Mr. Green? Ms. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have several questions. I just wanna review for accuracy. And for the record, this property was rezoned to planned unit development in November of two thousand three as part of the Park Village development. And at that time, a variety of uses were allowed, which include residential, commercial, and a commuter rail station. Is that correct, Mr. Green?
Yes, ma'am. And, and November twentieth of two thousand three was when Park Village was approved.
Okay. And so what that means, the same, a similar situation happened in a neighborhood where I live, and it happened all around Canton at that time when the economy tanked. This land simply didn't get developed. But technically, this land should have been built on in the early two thousands, and we would never be having this conversation. Correct?
If the economy would have allowed for that and the development trends, which the original developer was hoping for, certainly.
All right. We had the same surprises where I live, where some people moved in and didn't unders, didn't know what the land that's now beautiful was originally zoned for and what the property owner would be allowed to use it for. So I just wanna make sure. Excuse me. Excuse me.
No, no comments from the audience?
It's not your turn.
No comments from the audience? If you speak, you'll be escorted out.
Thank you. Mr. Green, pods F and I have been developed with single-family detached homes in Park Village. Is that correct?
I'm not sure if it's both of those pods, but there was one that was developed for the single-family detached homes.
Okay. And then Cherokee County purchased the remaining pods in two thousand nine?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Can we talk about the concern that a resident had about a creek disappearing from the plans? Will that be addressed?
If this project gets approved, when they submit for their land disturbance permits, that will something that will definitely be addressed by their civil engineer. And our city engineer will make sure whatever proper measures are needed to ensure the safety of the stream in its origin and how it flows to the property will be looked at.
How many homes were originally planned to be built in Park Village? And how many homes exist in Park Village?
It was limited to no more than seven hundred homes back in two thousand three. And I, I believe there's roughly a hundred and forty-five that have been built.
One hundred and forty-five?
Yes, ma'am.
Out of seven hundred in their master plan?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Are the streets in Park Village public or private?
They're public or private.
The reason I ask is to address the resident concern about cut-through traffic. I also live in a neighborhood that wants to stop cut-through traffic. But because the streets are public, anyone is allowed to use the streets. So that's what I was trying to figure out. So are the main streets that aren't alleys in Park Village public city streets? And the only way to restrict traffic flow on a street would be to make it private? And then it would be, the road maintenance would fall under the Park Village HOA?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there any chance that the landowner is willing to preserve the thirty-nine acres as a park?
That could be a question that can be asked of Cherokee County. My understanding is Becker is only buying a portion of the property that the county bought back in two thousand nine.
Okay. Could I get a clarification on Mr. Huff's comment about where green space could be? Is he talking about land that's part of this agreement? Or land that other entities own, and they could keep green space?
I can certainly ask Mr. Huff that question and get an answer. On the site analysis, it shows that there's seventy-five percent impervious surface on their thirty-six acres, which would therefore equate to twenty-five percent open space or green space for the balance of their thirty-six acres.
And then we've discussed this before, and I don't know for sure if we'll have an answer tonight. But typically, Mr. Patton's talked before about number of houses and residential and their impact on traffic versus a commercial or industrial development and its, its impact on traffic. Do we have any information about?
No, ma'am, not at this time.
Okay. And then is there going to be a traffic study for this development?
If the city engineer, I'm just wanting to determine if that one is necessary, we can certainly ask for one if this project gets approved or the developer may offer to have one prepared or semi-ready by the next meeting.
And then I just wanted to, it's not really a question, more of a comment, to explain. Sounds like the process isn't known to some of the residents here. So when a development is approved, council can put conditions on that development. And then those conditions have to be met when the property is developed and built. And it, that includes whatever they present. We can say it needs to look like this, or it has to have this kind of buffer, or et cetera, et cetera. So that's how, that's how things get included in something to be sure that it ends up that way. Is that correct, Mr. Green?
The buffers are a definite, that they would have to be in place, has approved by the council. Since Mr. Patton and I have been here, I cannot recall a single time that the council has approved a plan to be site plan specific, meaning that what is shown here basically has to be built, but there can be a different layout of the buildings as shown. Certainly, if you feel like a condition would be warranted to make it site plan specific, that would be up to you folks.
That's all I have for right now.
Okay. Ms. McGrew.
Mr. Green, can you tell me how pollution would be regulated?
Pollution in.
The fumes from the building of the robotics.
If there are elements inside the buildings, there would be filtration systems that, that would be required to be installed. Those would be looked at and reviewed by our building department.
Okay. And how often would they be tested for the longevity of the business?
That I do not know.
Okay. And Ms. Schmidt, you said what the property was zoned for now, and could you remind me of that, please?
The property was rezoned to planned unit development, PUD, in November two thousand three.
Thank you so much. When would we get a master plan? When would we get a master plan?
Well, the plan that is presented tonight is what the applicant, I would like to build a master plan for the entire development, is not a requirement.
I see. Would the stream not come under the twenty-five buffer, twenty-five-foot buffer rule?
If there's an existing stream, the buffer would be twenty-five foot undisturbed by the state, another twenty-five foot undisturbed by the city, and then an additional twenty-five foot area that could be disturbed, but no impervious surface would be allowed in that area.
So it would come under a fifty-foot buffer?
Undisturbed buffer.
Undisturbed.
And then the additional twenty-five feet would be part of the buffer as well.
Okay, give me just one minute. I would like to know, and I'm throwing that out there, if the developer would be interested in increasing the buffer or next to the residential units to seventy-five feet. I know the Europeans live differently than we do, and they value nature. So I would hope that they would be okay with increasing the buffer to seventy-five feet. Within that seventy-five-foot buffer, they could build a trail, and it could be public and used by the residents in the area and the employees on their breaks. And after work, they could use this area for native plants and pollinators. And I was hoping that the Native Plant Rescue Society could go into the property before it's disturbed, if this is approved, to rescue any endangered native plants at that time. Also, the schematic we received for the landscaping in the buffer, it shows cedar trees, which we have removed from our pallet because of their high pollen density. And cedar trees are wind-pollinated, not insect-pollinated. The Virginia pines are also wind-pollinated and not insect-pollinated. So as we're trying to increase our good air, we'd like to, I'd like to have those removed. We can replace the eastern cedar and the Virginia pine with American holly. Sycamore trees could grow to great heights, could be in the middle. So I'm sure that the applicant wouldn't mind researching our native plants and what's actually good for our environment. That's all I have for now, thank you.
In regards to the, the buffer, I just wanted to, regardless of what the final trees or plants wind up being, I did, I did want to just confirm that the, the heights of those plants or trees being proposed in that additional twenty-five-foot buffer, which will make the buffer being proposed fifty-feet buffer, fourteen feet and sixteen feet high planted initially? Am I reading that correctly?
I know, sir, that would be fourteen feet on center.
Off-center, okay, okay. Do we have a height for those, that those would be planted?
If this gets approved and the landscape plan comes through as part of the, of the land disturbance permit, I typically require an, an eight-to-ten-foot tree at time of planting.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Carlin?
I wanna thank the folks from Becker, Mr. Huff, good folks from Park Village. Appreciate everybody coming out here to talk about it today. We always make better decisions when we have more information. So I have a few questions, Mr. Green, if you need to come back to me with the answer, I understand. First question is, when, what makes you understand Mr. Huff's initial opening? There was an initial twenty-five-foot buffer that was in the plan that went to the public meeting. But since that time, it's come back and added an extra twenty-five feet. Is that correct?
Not quite. The original submittal, they were asking for a twenty-five-foot setback around the perimeter. And I believe after the community input meeting, hearing the concerns from the residents, they've added an additional twenty-five foot to that to be the planted buffer. So a total of fifty.
So it'd be a twenty-five-foot setback and then a twenty-five-foot buffer?
Yes, sir.
Very good. There was a mention of retail and commercial in the, on the campus. There was a mention of retail and commercial in the, on the campus. Is there an expectation that is going to be only for the folks at, on the campus, or is that going to be open to the residents of Canton, surrounding areas?
I'll certainly ask.
Thank you. And when the, in your experience, Mr. Green, when we have the hydrology study that does come back eventually to talk about what's going to happen with the water and if the rule is still the infiltration, whatever, whatever the rules are set at the time when they do it, before they pull their permits, if something, at what point can staff say your plan doesn't fit these rules anymore?
If, if the LDP plan gets approved, it is good for one year. Anything after that, they would have to resubmit and if there had been changes to the hydrology requirements, they would have to adhere to those new rules and regulations.
And these are rules that are not set by City of Canton?
Correct.
We're just talking about zoning, but if I understood the question from, I believe from Ms. Schmidt was, they're still going to have to come back with a master plan?
No, sir.
There will not be, this is a zoning master plan, or this is zoning together?
Right. What they're showing tonight is what they would like to build.
And, but for the residential, they'll have to come back for a CUP?
For the townhomes, yes, sir. Those would require the CUP.
Very good. For the Herd Road Connector at Park Village, do we have enough detail or has it gotten, is there enough detail out there to know what kind of an intersection this will be at that entrance?
It would be my understanding that those plans have been completely engineered about the county. And last I spoke with the county, they are expected to start construction on that in the latter part of this summer.
And what kind of intersection are they looking out there for, Park Village?
Roundabout.
Roundabout?
The back ingress, egress, fate, con and Park Village development will be a perfect ninety-degree intersection. The roundabout is going to be just north of that where Fate Con, Herd Road come together. What everybody commonly calls of the triangle area, that's where the roundabout's going to be. But Fate Con from the west towards the east will come in and form a perfect intersection, if you will, with the back entrance road into Park Village.
And what traffic control are they anticipating there? Is that just a stop sign? They anticipating a light?
We can ask the county what it shows in regards to what type of traffic movements. I don't know if it's going to be a four-way stop.
Sure.
I tend to think that's probably what it's going to be, but.
I appreciate the, Bethany having a look at the traffic study piece as well before, or the traffic before our next meeting.
Prior to the next meeting, I'll try to get a copy of the construction plans or at least a drawing that shows how the roads will be extended and connected.
And I believe that is, that is all the questions I have right now. Thank you, Mr. Green.
A couple, Mr. Green. Could you remind us what, without any master plan amendments, what could be built on that site today?
I know that there was a mixture of uses that was approved, and I think there was like six or seven different areas in two thousand three, and they consisted of commercial areas and retail areas.
So, commercial, any, any light industrial or?
No, no, sir.
And residential?
Just residential and commercial. We have a, a plan from back in two thousand three. I'll include that with the next staff report and highlight where the existing single-family homes are and what the affected areas are for this particular application.
Okay. And I believe you stated that there were, it was approved for seven hundred homes, single-family homes?
Not a maximum.
Approximately one hundred and forty-five are currently built in Park Village?
Yes, sir.
So that would leave five hundred and fifty-five homes that could be built theoretically.
Yes, sir.
How many cars do we, a lot typically per single-family home?
Parking spaces, two.
Or for, two?
Yes, typically two. There has to be one for every place that home occupation is allowed, so that would be three we look at. Houses typically have a two-car garage and one space could be used on the driveway as a parking spot.
So if the, the property were developed for those homes, it could generate twelve-hundred to fifteen-hundred horse vehicles per day on, on the, on the roads there, so. Mr. Nama mentioned the concern about no turn lanes into Park Village. Do you know if the Herd Road extension or the traffic improvement's going to address that?
No, sir. I'm not familiar with the turn lanes there.
Okay. Could you, could you find out about that?
Yes, sir.
And then, Mr. Kaiser mentioned, I believe, a concern about sewer capacity. I did, didn't want to remind him and anyone else's wondering about that, that we are in the midst of the largest municipal project in the city's history of expanding our sewer plant and should be finished middle of next year, which will give us plenty of capacity going forward. So we are taking care of that, so. Mr. Patton?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. In regards to traffic volumes, if you will, I T E trip generation manual, single-family detached homes, the average trip generation is nine-point-two trips per unit for residential. So the five-hundred and something units that have not been built for a traffic volume, you could multiply that by nine-point-two to come up with the amount of traffic that that would generate. The office industrial would generate a little bit less than that, but depends upon specific types of uses. Also, the intersection Fate Con, the back entrance to Park Village, as I understand it, will have a stop sign eastbound at Fate Con and stop sign exiting Park Village. Heard, or Technology Park Extension would be through traffic, if you will. It doesn't show any left turn lanes at either of Fate Con or Park Village.
Okay. And when we've had typically residential developments in the Bluffs area, have they been clear-cutted, clear-cut for the residential developments, basically?
Yes. For the most part, yes, sir.
Okay. And could you just touch upon this proposed development and their proposed use of solar?
We'll have to follow up with them to the extent of their solar usage.
Okay. I believe the proposal says that.
I have that prior to next city council meeting.
Okay. I believe their proposal says their entire facilities will be solar-powered, but, but I would love to have that confirmed, please. Ms. Wilson?
I think that we've answered most of the questions that were brought by the, the folks who came here to speak, and thank you for your concerns. One gentleman wanting to know, will this proposal be followed? The restaurants that are proposed and, and those sort of things that are in this plan, how closely will that be followed?
That is sort of left up to city council, if you will. Like Steve had indicated previously, if you want to make a condition of approval to this site plan, the city has not done that previously. Once they start grading, they might have to shift some buildings. And if you make it specific to the site plan, they needed to shift a building slightly because of something with the grading, they would have to come back to you to shift that building. That's one of the problems, if you will. But for the most part, you would be approving office industrial for a certain square footage. You would be approving retail for a certain square footage, a number of residential units, the townhomes that are listed as it is shown.
So we could, if I could understand you correctly, Mr. Patton, we could condition it to the square footage of usage on, not specifically the site plan, but condition it to the square footage of the usages proposed?
Correct.
Could we, could we also condition it to the two, could we also condition the two buildings that are proposed for commercial and retail remain commercial and retail at those square footages?
You can certainly add a condition that the retail office service transition between the residential portion of Park Village and the technology industrial buildings, if you will.
Yeah, because I believe that was the intent of the applicant, reading the application, that that was the transition and also to put the retail closer to residential, so the residential, residents could enjoy that as well, so. So I just want to clarify that. So we couldn't, suppose we could, but not make it site plans specific, but we could condition the square foot usage and, you know, particular buildings being loc, location, but not exact locations, but those buildings being stepped down to commercial.
And that the, the retail would be to the east side of the proposed development serves a transition between the residential portion of Park Village and the industrial, which would be located to the west.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. McGrew?
Thank you. Mr. Green or Mr. Patton, would you please, for the public record, explain the tree inventory process? And I'm assuming that this development would have to do a tree inventory also?
That is correct. Steve does work with the developer part of the land disturbance plans. They select one-acre plots to do a representative tree count, tree survey. They have to identify all of the specimen trees. They come up with a plan for recompensation for the amount of trees that are removed with the grading process, part of their revegetation plan.
And what caliper tree do they have to replant in, on their site?
If it's a specimen tree that's removed, it's got to be at least three inches in caliber. They're required to plant twenty tree units per acre, and that is not synonymous with number of trees. We have a formula in the UDC that you get so much credit for the size of tree per unit. That also lessens out trees that are planted in the buffer are not counted toward their minimum tree requirement.
And obviously, the, if the plan is approved, buildings will be taking up space that trees were in, so they can't replant all of the trees. Would you explain the monetary contributions, please?
If it's determined that the site cannot adequately or have trees planted there, that would be in the best or optimum growing conditions, they do have the option of placing money in our city tree fund. And we charge three hundred and fifty dollars per tree to go into the fund that they cannot optimally plant on the site.
And where do the trees get planted using the money from the tree fund?
To date, since Ken and I have been here, we have not spent any money out of the tree fund. So I would say that it, that it could go or would look at planting it on city-owned property, you know, some parks, areas that may need trees, some rights of ways.
Thank you.
Tree Commission, Tree City would provide input to city council in regards expenditures out of the tree fund and where the trees would be planted.
I was just thinking that our new sustainability and environmental board would be the vehicle to make, help make those decisions. Thank you.
Has, am I mistaken or has the site been cleared before?
I don't believe any of it has been cleared. It is still just raw land.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Waterman?
Mr. Green, this is something we can check into. I've heard a, a few comments about the parking deck and, and the visibility of the common areas. If the developer would consider maybe altering the, the layout so that there's no, basically the, the residents are not feeling like they're being looked at. So if there's a, either a solid wall that, that's tall enough, you know, on top of that hill, hill there, or, or even rotating it. But basically, that's the concern. The, the residents are not, feel like they're being watched. So if the developer could maybe alter the design or consider it.
All right. I will certainly ask him that. I'm sure Mr. Huff is still in the audience and he has heard your concern as well.
Thanks.
Mr. Tullin?
I do have one question. Mr. Huff mentioned that the, the other spaces, the industrial office spaces that are not currently planned for, for tenancy, would have businesses that feed into the Becker project or like businesses? Can we drill down a little bit and, and make that a little bit more defined as, as we get closer to talking more about this?
Certainly. Are you, are you speaking about the complex that Mr. Tippins was referring to earlier in, in the night's meeting?
I'm thinking and talking specifically about what Mr. Huff mentioned. He mentioned that there would be, it would be limited, I believe he used the term, to businesses that feed into the Becker facility and like businesses. I don't know that we can condition that, but I would like to get some more clarification, please.
All right.
Schmidt?
Yes, thanks. I just was going back through our packet and wanted to clarify again on the traffic study question, because I felt like the answer was maybe there will be a traffic study, but in our packet, it already says that a full traffic impact study will be required prior submission for our land disturbance permit. Is that accurate?
If that is something that Ms. Watson wants, yes.
So, just making sure. So it also says that that traffic impact study shall include the following: traffic volumes, crash data, projected conditions, trip distribution, traffic assignment, projected volumes, and the conclusion should include suggested improvements. All existing traffic data should be gathered on a weekday when school is in session, and I'd just like to point out that school is almost out. Otherwise, there should be a methodology as to how traffic volumes are obtained and calculated.
If I might add, Park Village, when it was originally zoned, it did go through a development of regional importance review at A R C and Georgia Regional Transportation Authority. There was a traffic study, environmental studies that were prepared and submitted part of that D R I review process for the original Park Village, which was a proposed seven-hundred residential units and one hundred and fifty-two thousand square feet of retail space. We will see if we can find that traffic study. Probably can get all of that through A R C, but there was a D R I in our original traffic environmental study that was done with the original zoning for this property.
Okay. Any further questions, comments? Mr. Carlin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And being pointed back to the letter from Mr. Huff's office, following the residential input, the public meeting that was held with residential input in paragraph, page three, paragraph one, does lay out some, a note from Jeff Morton from Cherokee County about that intersection. I just have one question about it, because he uses a term I don't think I, I understand because it's not my area. It talks about intersection will be stop control for Fate Con coming onto Technology Ridge Parkway and Park Village coming onto Technology Ridge Parkway, those two stop signs Mr. Patton was talking about. Technology Ridge Parkway would be the main roadway, be a dedicated left turn lanes for both Park Village and Fate Con from Technology Ridge, and it would be a four-leg intersection with left turn lanes. I like the term four-leg intersection. I just don't know what it means, because. I like the term four-leg intersection, I just don't know what it means, because you explained to me what kind of, can you paint me a picture?
I can, I will get an answer for you.
Very good. I feel like these are four legs, probably all right.
Legs is four different roadways, or four different directions of the road, that's what four legs mean. Three legs would be three roads, or three different directions.
You know, that makes good sense.
As you thought.
I mean, I was expecting it to be really complicated. That's great, thank you so much.
It's a dog of an intersection.
That was pretty good for an answer.
I'm, I'm first one to tell you up here, I'm not the brightest. And that the site distance issues would be alleviated, because when they build the road, it'll adjust for that, that they'll have to meet all the safety standards?
Yes, sir.
All right, that helps kind of paint that picture a little bit better. I appreciate you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anything else? Okay, thank you, Mr. Green. I do want to thank our citizens who came, came out and spoke tonight. We appreciate your comments, we respect them. I'm not trying to be a control freak up here, but we legally have to control public hearings. Once the public hearing is closed, we cannot accept any other additional comments from the audience, or we can all get in trouble, so, especially me, so. So I appreciate your patience and your comments, so, thank you all. So we will move into our second public hearing. So public hearing and discussion of M P A 2203-001, Bluff Pod B, Phase 3, requesting master plan amendment to construct 112 single-family detached homes. Mr. Green?
All right, Mr. Mayor, members of council, as you stated, this is a master plan amendment to the Bluff development.
Mr. Green, could you pause a moment while everyone exits? Go ahead, Mr. Green.
All right. The applicant is seeking approval for 112 single-family detached homes. As you may recall, at the latter part of 2021, the application came before the mayor and council for an amendment to allow for some townhomes. The master plan amendment was denied, and the conditional use permit was allowed to be withdrawn without prejudice. That was on December 2nd. On December 16th, the mayor and council had a vote to allow the master plan amendment to be resubmitted without having to suffer the 12-month penalty with prejudice since it was denied. I think in the interim, the owners had some meetings with members of council and came up with the preferred house style as being single-family detached. So they are here tonight asking for that master plan amendment. To date, the number of homes approved for the Bluffs is 750. Pod B currently has 144 approved townhomes, some are still under construction for this, for Phase 2, and Lennar has approved 433 homes. And again, the applicant is seeking 112 single-family detached homes.
Mr. Green? We will open the public hearing and ask the applicant to speak in favor, I assume.
Good evening. Again, for the record, my name is Parks, Safford Law Firm, with Sam Zlachter and Huff, and I represent T P A in relation to this rezoning or master plan amendment that's before you tonight. Going to just briefly go, y'all know the property, I think y'all probably tired of talking about this property. What's one advantage of hopefully approving this is, is we don't have to talk about it anymore. This is on the Bluff Parkway, it's on the left-hand side as you're going up on Bluff Parkway, on the right-hand side you can see the Lennar development, and you know this development, there's been a Phase 1, and this was a Phase 1, this was a Phase 2, that's the layout of the Phase 1 that was approved, this is the Phase 2, which was townhomes, and then we're talking about the corner property that's on the north-hand side. This was the proposal previously, which came before you, end of last year, townhomes that were similar to what, what had already been built out there. So we sat down with a good number of y'all and looked at the details of what we could do to make the site acceptable to the city. So again, this is 112 units, did a couple things. Number one, it did away with the need for a second entrance. We also have all detached product, and we have the entrance all the way down, so it's furthest from that round, roundabout, if you will. And then it has its own amenity package. Before, we were talking about that it might share an amenity package to the other property, and I'm not saying that, that we're, they still may have a sharing arrangement, but this will in fact have its own amenity package. This is the type of product we're talking about. One of the things that I really think is, is cool, the client went around the country and looked at, at different projects in different areas, and looked at a garage recess that sits way back, and I always have this request, I'm going to regret saying this, I've had this request in many different situations, because what you do, you see that, that top view, you look down the street, you got the garage set several feet back from the front, so it really makes it a very nice streetscape and provides some additional parking area. The key points to this is, number one, we were, had a conditional use permit before that, which is required in your multifamily attached product, and so we're not, no longer asking for conditional use permit, because we're having a detached product. We reduce it from 134 to 112 units, and this is the last piece in the P U D that's not owned by the city, and so this is going to, if this were approved, we would be 60 less than was approved in the original P U D, just to give another example that, that, you know, we're not maxing out the site. So we think that this is going to add a product to the area. Super, my client's sitting here, super excited about the potential of some of the other developments going north of here, and the housing that they'd be providing would be perfect for the people that would be working, hopefully, in those businesses as they come online in the, in the future. So this is the, the last piece that they own in the Bluffs, and we hope that we have listened to you and responded to your requests, and if there's anything else that we've missed, just let me know, and we'll be glad to respond. I hope, hope we've shown that we, you know, sincerely want to work with you and, and resolve the questions and concerns that you've got, and hopefully we've, we've done our due diligence here.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. And no one signed up to speak in opposition or support, so we will close the public hearing and open up to council for questions and comments. I did want to start off by thanking the applicant for responding to council's concerns and listening to council. I personally think what, what you've brought back is, is, is really a, a very nice solution, a very nice product, and I, I appreciate the effort and, and the effort to, to abide by a roadmap and, and respond to council's concerns, so. Questions, comments? Ms. McGrew?
Thank you. Well done, excuse me, well done. I, I am very pleased to see this project. It's not industrial-looking, like row after row of townhomes. It looks like a community where anybody would love to live with their family and enjoy their neighbors. I truly appreciate you for hearing council and helping us to offer people a gentle, kind, familiar place to live. Seeing as I've heard that this will probably be rental, who will be responsible for maintenance of the landscaping? Will the resident have to take their own initiative, or will this be provided by the owner of the property? And is the applicant aware of our plant palette? And are they intending to go before the oversight committee?
No, ma'am. These being single-family detached homes, they're not required to go before the oversight.
Thank you so much.
And I will mention that Mr. Patton just let me know just a few minutes ago that these are planned to be rental units, not owner-occupied.
Okay, that's what I thought. And so I was wondering who would be responsible for the maintenance of the, of individual lawns?
I'll find that out.
Thank you.
Mr. Patton, you?
Well, certainly, a follow-up of the applicant, generally in these situations, there will be an additional fee attached, and there will be a, a maintenance company that will take care of all of the maintenance. That's generally what happens with all of these rental communities that seem to be in vogue these days.
Right.
But we'll confirm that with the applicant.
That's absolutely my pre, my preference, to keep the yards and the landscaping uniform so that one person doesn't mow their grass and then nobody else does, and let's keep the city and the residential areas looking nice and welcoming.
Councilor Wilson?
Mr. Green, are the garages one-car or two-car?
I will find out. I do appreciate that, that the, that they're set back, back from the house, and that way, hopefully, they won't be hanging over the sidewalk and being an obstruction, something we've become acutely aware of when we're doing front yard setbacks, to make sure that there's plenty of room on the driveway to park without the car extending into the sidewalk.
Mr. Tolan?
Mr. Green, the day that myself and a couple of my colleagues met with Mr. Huff, I'm afraid I was a little math challenged that day. At 112 units, we had, we had thrown out the possibility of rent control for 10% of the residents, and I realize a lot, a lot of water has flown under the bridge since that discussion, and so I would like to ask the applicant if they would be willing to set aside, I think they've tentatively agreed on one or two units, but I'd like to go back to them and ask them if they would be willing to set aside six units to be afforded the opportunity to, to some people that might be, you know, a lower A M I than some of the, the market rate residents that will certainly occupy and enjoy this, this, what looks to be beautiful property.
All right, I will certainly ask that of Mr. Huff and his, and his client there here tonight, and they have heard your concern, so I expect I'll get an answer from them sooner rather than later.
We would appreciate it, you know, with the, with the rising rents all over town, I mean, I've, I've heard of no less than seven apartment complexes that have raised their rents some, in some cases 30 to 40%, so, you know, this, this kind of ask is, is definitely in, in response to a really critical need that we have in the community. So thank you.
Any further questions? Mr. Carlin?
Certainly support Mr. Sean, Mr. Tolan's new math, than we have here. Excellent. Was part of the contingent that thought the first product that was brought was fine. I appreciate the applicant hearing from the dissenters and coming up with something different. I think this has presented an even better project, so I'm glad that some good came out of that to come through this. We have an amenity package that's over off to the east-west, it looks like, if my geography's right. There also, do I see like a sidewalk, walking trail that would encircle the area? So like we'd have continuous sidewalks throughout? And if not, could we, could we confirm whether that's the case? Just so we'd have some contiguous sidewalks throughout the neighborhood as people walk? Will there be, or what's, is going to be the width of these roads as well?
For the sidewalks, we require sidewalks on both sides of the street, so that, so that is a requirement.
Excellent. And the width of the road throughout this project?
If they're going to be public streets, it's a 50-foot right-of-way and plus the pavement, it's 20 feet.
Or private, same thing, 50-foot right-of-way, minimum 20-foot left-of-way.
Perfect. And is there, I don't see anywhere else in here, is there any other parking other than right in front of the amenities? Or it's all parking, it'd be driveway parking or street parking? Do we have a couple right there? Is that what I'm looking at? Very good, that helps. Much easier just to point for me. Couldn't help but explain it sometimes. All right, I think that's all the questions I had. Thank you, Mr. Green.
Any further questions? Thank you, Mr. Green. So we'll move into our business meeting. You have in your packet draft minutes from our April 21st meeting, are there any changes or revisions?
I moved to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say nay. Members voted for the motion. Informational items, we have a review of March's financials. Ms. Forrester?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm just going to briefly touch on a few significant items from March and give you a summary on franchise fees. So first of all, I want to let you know that Lori Waters, our H R director, applied for, and the city received a $53,825 grant from the Georgia governor's office. This grant provided a $1,000 payment to 50 certified police officers who worked with the city during 2021. We also wrapped our vaccination incentive plan. We wrapped that up in March with costs totaling $40,606. Before the plan was implemented, 55 employees had already been fully vaccinated. So encouraging a vaccination with the incentive plan, we got an additional 20 employees fully vaccinated. That was part of the ARPA funding, and we did just file our first annual report last week with the treasury. Our first liquor store finally paid in the first liquor package store. So we were able to record $7,800 in alcohol license fees and just over $200,000 in additional fees, which represent half of the bid from Prayanka Patel. We also received our Georgia Power annual franchise fee totaling $1,392,000. This exceeded our budgeted estimates by more than 4%. And of course, this Georgia Power payment is a franchise fee. And just in summary, the Georgia Legislature, the Georgia Public Service Commission, and the Georgia Department of Community Affairs, all use the terms franchise fees and franchise taxes interchangeably. However, the Georgia Municipal Association makes an explicit statement that says franchise fees are not taxes, and they do not limit.
And they never shall meet. Taxes and fees, they are different.
And they do not limit service providers who can choose to operate in the area, and that's an issue that often comes up as we get new developments and new people moving into the area. They question why the city limits, say, cable service providers, and the city does not, but if one chooses to operate and provide services in the city, they will pay a franchise fee. And that franchise fee is pretty much to be considered like a rental payment for the use of land and right-of-ways. In Georgia, cities are allowed to collect franchise fees from sanitation, electric, national, natural gas, telephone or telecommunications, and cable service providers. Georgia code specifically states that franchise fees must be uniformly applicable to all service providers in the same industry and calculated on annual gross receipts. And as you know, gross receipts are a function of rates and the number of customers, so as rates and customers go up, usually our franchise fees go up as well. Georgia code establishes that telephone service providers must pay a statutory franchise fee of 3% to all municipalities. City of Canton has an established standard electric franchise fee rate of 4%. Standard cable franchise, franchise fees of 5% and a standard sanitation franchise fee of 10%. The natural gas industry typically pays about 3%, but it's based on a more complicated formula and has to do with design date capacity. date capacity, inflation adjustments. Franchise fees are self-reported and paid by the provider. So the independent utility is responsible for updating their list of affected customers and remitting the proper payment to the appropriate jurisdictions. Franchise fees are used by the city to maintain and improve infrastructure and the public right of ways. And if there's no further questions, that concludes my remarks for this evening.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Forrester?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your announcements, I do have a quick proclamation to present. It's the City Canton Proclamation Number 20220505. It's in observance of 53rd Annual Professional Municipal Clerks' Week, May 1st through May 7th, 2022. Whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk is oldest among public servants, and whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk provides a professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal services to all. Whereas the Professional Municipal Clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. Whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of affairs of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. Whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize accomplishments of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk. Now therefore, I, Bill Grant, Mayor of the City of Canton, do recognize the week of May 1st through May 7th, 2022, as Professional Municipal Clerks' Week, and further extend our appreciation to our Professional Municipal Clerk, Ms. Annie Fortner, and all the Professional Municipal Clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent.
Thank you.
Think we could have replaced some of those Professional Municipal Clerks with City Clerk, and they'd have been quicker, so.
We'll make that change next.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. We had no one sign up for the 10-minute public input, so we'll move into old business. Item A, discussion and possible action to approve resolution authorizing membership in Georgia Interlocal Risk Management Agency, GMA. Mr. Ingram?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. If you will, if you recall, last month, we approved moving the city's property and casualty insurance to GMA's GMA, Georgia Interlocal Risk Management Agency. In order to do that, and that was approved, and we are currently under that policy, started May 1st, but GMA requires us to pass a resolution to be a member of that GMA. And this is a formality that I have in front of you. We are asking, because time is of the essence, we are asking for council's consideration of action tonight. But just to let you know, for assurance, we did not get that from GMA. They had to have the application approved in binder before they submitted it. So this was not a neglect on the city staff or even our broker. This is just a formality that can be done after the fact.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Questions for Mr. Ingram? Any motions?
I move to approve the resolution authorizing membership in the Georgia Interlocal Risk Management Agency.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All members voted for the motion?
Thank you.
Item B, discussion and possible action on resolution of support for the Canton Housing Authority. Mr. Peppers?
We talked about this at the last meeting. I, I will mention that Jackie Lowberg is here with us, our executive director of the Canton Housing Authority. Mr. Tolan and Mr. Ingram and I went to their last meeting, learned more about their process and what they're looking at. And, and basically, this is the city's commitment of $40,000 per unit for their RAD application. And we would like to get this voted on tonight. They have their application for RAD due later this month, and that would be one box they could check off and not have to worry about prior to that application.
Thank you. I think we discussed this, we've discussed this before in the new, new arrangements, so, Mr. Tolan?
I would like to make one comment relative to that meeting. One of the things that came out of the meeting was the Canton Housing Authority is going to be mentored officially now by the Northwest Georgia Housing Authority in Rome.
Nice.
Who, those of us that have been there know it's an amazing place ran by an amazing woman, Ms. Sandra Hudson. And it really just tickled me to death to know that, that relationship is now solid and, and our Canton Housing Authority has a very strong potential of having some of the same passion and wraparound services and energy that Ms. Hudson has fostered over in Rome. And I'm just really thrilled about that. With that in mind, I would like to make a motion to approve the resolution of support for the Canton Housing Authority as laid out in our, in our packet.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? All members voted for a motion, so.
Mr. Mayor, if I could make one comment, I did it in an email, but I'm going to embarrass. I, I made, I made a comment to, to Ms. Lowberg after the meeting, how wonderful it is having her in charge and having a staff there at the Housing Authority that are knowledgeable about housing, that are, that serve with integrity and transparency. The board, the staff, they've been fantastic to work with. We have not always had that relationship. I think the board was tickled to death with, with, with the idea of this resolution of support in this amount for their particular project. And it just shows a great relationship. And, and a lot of it starts with, with Ms. Lowberg, so I did want to make that.
Definitely. We appreciate Ms. Lowberg. We appreciate our Board of Directors, who have done great work in the past few years. And, and Mr. Tolan, appreciate your efforts. And we're proud to support this initiative. And we, we tried last year, but we're, we're very confident this year, we will get, get the job done and, and move forward. So thank you very much. So. So item C, discussion and possible action regarding the technology ridge easement. Mr. Peppers?
Yes, we had, we had one small area that got left off of our easement list when we approved those at the last meeting. And we need council to take action approving that easement and right of way deed tonight, so we can complete our portion of land swap or the land dedication as it relates to the technology ridge parkway.
Questions?
Peppers?
I move to approve the technology regisment.
Second?
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? All members voted for the motion. Item D, discussion and possible action provide for the exemption from the residential sanitation franchises for neighborhoods with private streets.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Earlier this week, let me back up a little and say, last week, we received our proposals from the issue of the city's RFP for sanitation services. We received two proposals, one from Waste Management, one from Waste Pro. As a consequence, we convened a sanitation committee on Tuesday to discuss the proposals and try to focus our direction in, in one meth, one way or the other. As part of that review process, it's been brought to our attention that there are a number of areas within the City of Canton that are private, are private developments. They have private streets. And should the city consider allowing those private developments, those private areas, be exempt from the city's franchise development? This current contract expires September 30th. One of the private developments has approached us and said, we would like to have city's permission to go out and potentially requisition our own services. This is a private development. And to do that, they're asking for a letter from the city. We discussed this at the sanitation committee meeting on Tuesday, and it was recommended that we bring something in front of the whole council to discuss and quite possibly approve us to issue that letter to them. Now, this would not preclude those developments from piggybacking off of the city, should they choose to, if that is in their best interest and, and in the city's best interest. But having that option may allow them to go forward and, you know, do some RFPs of their own and requisition that service. It would also help with the city on any liability. As you may be aware of, there have been a few instances where we've had some of the sanitation trucks have leaks on those private streets. And again, I read that is a city franchise agreement with that sanitation provider putting trucks onto those private streets. So that has been an issue in the past. So we, we brought this in front of council, and we'd like for council to consider approving us to do that, should they choose.
Questions, comments?
I have a question, Mr. Ingram. If we approve this action tonight, and a private neighborhood wants to come back into the fold under the city, is that allowable?
I believe we would anticipate doing that at the time of a renewal, October 1st of each year. The, what we put in the proposal and the RFPs is a three-year contract.
Mm-hmm.
It would not be fair for the winning proposer to be given those, for lack of a better way of explaining it, giving those developments in the middle of a year. I would think it would only be fair at the time of renewal of each policy. So I think that would be possible, but it should occur at October 1st of each year.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Carlin?
Just like to thank Ms. McGrew, Mr. Mortimer, who are on that sanitation committee with me, that we've worked through the RFPs. We do have a few questions outstanding, to make sure we pin down the right rates before we bring it to council completely, and we can have a better discussion about it at that time. But in the meantime, as Mr. Ingram said, time is of the essence to let these folks see if they can get a better rate. And if they can, great for them, but if they can't, then we, they're certainly welcome back with us. And so I would move to, how do you want this phrase to permit?
Approve the letter, allowing?
Approve the?
Private developments to opt out.
Very good. We have to make a motion for the council to approve a letter to allow private development to opt out of the sanitation requirements.
Franchises.
Franchises. Very good. There we go. You'll make that sound better. You got that plaque. You're good. You're good.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All members voted for the motion.
Thank you. And Councilor Carlin, I should have done a better job at making that recommendation.
You're good. You're good. You could have said it perfectly. I still would have messed it up. You're okay.
Okay, we'll move into new business now. Item A, discussion of the award of the Reservoir Road at Hickory Log Drive Intersection Improvement Project. Ms. Watson?
Thank you. Earlier today, we received three bids on this project. The apparent low bidder is Wilson Construction Management in the amount of $858,647.88. I will not be asking for approval tonight. I gotta go through everything, make sure everything looks right. As you may recall, this project is to add a right turn lane into Hickory Log Drive and a left turn lane into the Grand Reserve Apartments, as well as a signal there at the Teasley Middle School. And I'll be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Ms. McGrew?
If you have the figures available tonight, how much is the traffic light without the road changes? Ballpark?
It, it was, it's under 200,000. It's probably, I can't remember exactly what the different bids were, even though I put every single number in earlier today.
Fine.
It may be 150. It's, it's a, it's a good bid, but not the entirety of the project.
So the majority of that money is for the road changes?
Yes, the majority of the is for, the biggest section of this is for traffic control, actually. There was almost $200,000 in traffic control.
Thank you.
And that the city pays for this? And what was the funding source?
So, so we do have money in escrow. It's, we're being paid for in, through impact fees.
Impact fees.
And it's lost. And by escrow, I mean money that the apartment has?
That's right.
Set aside. Yes.
And I mentioned too, the great thing about this project is, most of this would have had to have been done with the new Cherokee High School anyways. So by getting it done now, even though it's late for Teasley, it's really good for that particular area to get all of that in now.
Thank you, Ms. Watson, for your work on this. We look forward to the final proposal. Item B, discussion of request to abandon a portion of Jackie Moore Lane. Mr. Peppers?
If you'll recall, there was an apartment complex that was approved off of Jackie Moore Lane. The applicant, the developer has asked us to consider abandoning a stretch of Jackie Moore Lane that's within their property. I've provided to you a copy of what that looks like. There's an ALTA survey included in that. Basically, the process would be that if council so wishes to abandon, we would put this on the agenda for the next meeting for the abandonment process. And then we would likely agree to having someone do a third-party appraisal and then work with the developer to receive a fee associated based on that appraisal that would come with the deeding of the property.
Questions or comments? On, on the appraisal, I know we, we've done it, but we asked the property or developer to get the appraisal done. Is, have we ever considered, like, the city picking the appraisal and having the developer pay for that, or?
That's, that's basically what happened last time.
Okay, okay. Would we do that same thing here? I mean?
We can. We get the same appraiser to, to do it.
Okay. I don't know if we have a city appraiser or one choice, but it seems to make sense. Any, any other questions? Okay. Mr. Peppers?
Couple of items to update. There was a meeting recently for the mayor. Mr. Tolan and staff participated in a meeting with Lou Oliver to talk about the development, the land that we own up at Laurel Canyon, that we've talked about for doing kind of a, a new housing prototype that we could use throughout the city. We did receive yesterday a proposal back from Mr. Oliver that's basically a setup of a master plan, looking at the site and coming up with a concept of how many units could go below. The cost of that was $5,000. It was a great, long discussion with Mr. Oliver, lots of information. You know, basically, he said we could go however we wanted to on the site. And our staff had a lot to add into those conversations as well. So I know we're excited about the opportunity to, to move forward with that. We will probably put this on the agenda for you to consider for approving at the next meeting. But I'll get a copy of this out to you so that you'll be able to look at it, and we can move forward with that hopefully at the next meeting. I will let you know that we have a couple of applications that came in as part of the May 1st deadline for public hearings. The first is, well, it's, it's actually the same project. One is for a master plan amendment in Pod J of Riverstone to allow 172 townhomes. And then the corresponding is a conditional use permit for those townhomes on Pod J. And I believe the applicant has reached out to several of you already. That would come to council in July for a public hearing. Additionally, a couple of, couple of notes. We currently have out our RFB, or our bid process, for the second liquor package license. It's due on June 2nd. It's due on June second. There'll be a pre-bid meeting on May the nineteenth. We also have an RFP out right now for towing services. It's due June twenty-third and there'll be a pre-bid meeting on the nineteenth of May. We also have a public arts master plan out right now. Those are due June twenty-third. The bids for Harmon Park improvements are due May sixteenth. And I will mention, one, if you'll recall, a few meetings back, council approved moving forward with the construction of work on Juniper Street related to a sidewalk in Stormwater. The actual bidder on that work or the, the group that got the contract on that work has backed out. The next highest bidder was above the public works rate required for bidding. So we, we are putting that project back out to bid. So it is out to bid right now. Those bids are due on June third with a pre-bid meeting on the seventeenth of May. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Mr. Peppers?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Briefly, one, I had no council introduce items during the agenda approval. Make sure. Just quickly, I just wanted to report back on the teen job fair. We had, it was a great success. We didn't know what to expect, but it was very nice surprise. Over a hundred students and I think maybe quite a few more, but over thirty businesses. And it was just a huge success. I want to thank Mr. Carlin for coming, helping that. I want to give a big thanks to Ms. Lauren Johnson for all the work that she did on that. She did a great job. Our students were happy and I want to thank Mr. Jerry Keen from JK Images, who did the headshots are free. We got, got the photos in today and they looked great. But we heard that, you know, several students got offered jobs on the site and others are interviewing. So it was a huge success and we've already had, had teenagers ask us when the next one's going to be. And a few of their parents are asking quite too. So anyway, it was a great success and we were excited about that, so. And anyway, anything else? We'll take, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session for real estate and personnel.
Motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss real estate and personnel unless there's something more.
There's nothing more. We have a motion and a second? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
I'd like to take a moment to thank Ms. Angie Busby for all that she did for the fair too, getting, working with the kids and economic people, the businesses.
Thank you, Ms. Busby. So we have a motion and a second? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? We're adjourned to executive session.